You can start.
All right. Good morning, everybody. Today is March 6th. It is 12:05. I'm calling the Texas State Board of Examiners of Psychologists to order. We call the roll forward.
I sure will.
Thank you.
Mr. Adler.
I'm here.
Dr. Becker.
Here.
Mr. Ryan Bridges. Dr. Calhoun. Dr. Cartwright.
Here.
Dr. Lambden.
Here.
Dr. Singh.
Here.
And Mr. Zagaris.
Here.
All right, we have a call.
Very good. Want to thank everybody for their patience. I'm sorry I was running five minutes late. I had to be in Dallas this morning and opted to drive rather than fly because I could just make it. So we saved the state about about a hundred dollars a minute for each minute. We started late today. So thank you, everybody, for your patience with me. So I'm going to start with an old political question that was asked at a presidential debate one time is who am I? Why am I here? And we're here today to discuss an issue that we really would prefer to not have to address. I've heard some of the chatter out there in terms of concerns about what are what are we doing with E triple P? And what are we doing with our entrance exam? And do we do we want to have it? I want to state for the public and for everybody here that nobody on this, there's no one on this board who has ever advocated for getting rid of our exam. Quite the contrary. I again, I think I speak for the entire board. I can speak for myself here, even as a public member. I do not want, I think it is imperative that we have an entrance exam. And for decades, that standard has been the E triple P. And there's a national exam that we have used again for decades. That is, the idea that we may not have access to that, though, is there's something that needs to be made very clear here to, I think, everybody listening. The Texas State Board of Examiners of Psychologists or the Behavior Health Executive Council does not actually own our own test. That test belongs to ASPB, which is the national organization of other boards like this. So it is, it is their prerogative to put constraints or conditions on that. That is their prerogative. And their prerogative and their choice has been to condition access to E triple P one on the adoption of E triple P two, of which we have questions of what problem are we solving for? We have questions about discrimination. We have questions about validity. There are numerous questions. Those are the ones that come to my mind immediately. So we're here today to talk about that and really to hear from the public because as a board, we've discussed it at our previous meetings, discussed it with staff. We don't know what to do exactly here because we're very much between a rock and a hard place. And I've asked calls from during our meetings and I've reached out to other stakeholders throughout the state. We need the brain trust of Texas to help us figure this out. Stakeholders, members of the public. And that's why we're here today. And the interesting thing, too, about this, the format of this meeting and why we did it this way, I think this is also important for the public to understand. And I see everybody here just so much appreciation for everybody who is here today to participate and to listen. We set this meeting up, usually when we hear public comment, the board cannot respond to it. But we got with staff and said, how do we have a meeting where we can actually have the full board to have a conversation with the public similar to how we would have our luncheon learns? And this is what we came up with. So this is a little different for the fact that the board can have a discussion with the public. We can ask questions. We can talk about what you guys talk about and debate it. So we're going to stick to our same format, though, of three minutes per individual. And we'll go from there. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, five minutes. I'm sorry, five minutes.
With the prerogative, you can adjust that time as you see fit.
That's right. So if the board does have additional questions, we may go beyond that for for a stakeholder or somebody raises a particularly great point, great. If you can make your point, I'm not sure. We've got a lot of participants here today. If you can make your point, my first boss taught me be good, be brief, be gone. So if you can make your point and less than that, it would be appreciated for for the efficacy of everybody involved. But I'll leave that to whoever is speaking at the time. And because this time, that's why we're here today. We're here to hear you and have a discussion with the public about this critical issue. We don't know what to do about it. And we're here to solve it together. So with that, I'll ask the board if any of the board wants to say something before we get started, I'm going to go ahead and jump into public comment.
I'll say something real quick, John. Because I feel like I I started some of this. So I I would like to lay out for a moment really quickly because I've had a few discussions this past week that have given me some pause, which is, I think that a lot of folks think we are here to discuss whether or not we're taking away a licensing exam, and we are not. I for one will not vote for taking away a licensing exam ever. But what we are up against is that there is a mandate to adopt this by January 1, 2026, which is not as far away as folks think it is. And there are some very challenging regulatory aspects that are related to that. And so what I'm looking for is, I think, as a board, I won't speak for everyone here, but we would like to go back to ASPB and ask for more time to understand these things and understand why we're being asked for this, ask for information. But what I'm looking for personally from the public is what questions and concerns do you all have about the E triple P two? Because I have been in this for almost two years now, banging my head against this brick wall of what the challenges are with what we are being asked to do as a board and what we feel like we're doing for public safety. And our options are adopt a smushed together text test that is going to be very expensive, that we don't really understand entirely, that we haven't been given all the data on, that we still are are being told a lot of things that we are supposed to assume about, that we haven't demonstrated that we have a need for. But we're being told that we have to adopt it, which I hear a lot of argument that we should just go and do that. And then we have to explain that to BHEC. So I hear all of those things, but what I'd really like to hear from the public is, what are y'all's concerns about this? And if there are folks that have more experience with E triple P two than I do, help me understand it. Help me understand the good, the bad, and the ugly about it.
Thank you, Dr. Becker.
That was well said, Dr. Becker. I pretty much have nothing else to add, but that was, that was a very good summation.
Indeed. Yeah. And thank you, Dr. Becker. I echo your comments as well. All right. With that, anybody else hearing none? Let's go ahead and jump into public comment. We're just raising our hand. What are we doing here?
The one thing I would note, Mr. Chair, before we go is, right now, we're looking at, we've got, for purposes of the record, we've got, looks like 100 and, well, we've had 113 people, virtual attendees right now in session, just to kind of give the public some idea of what the level of interest on this is is right now. So.
That's, I don't know, exact percentages. That's a significant increase from our usual.
It's a pretty good increase.
Yeah. When I say, thank you for everybody being here and in attendance, that's not a casual comment. I can see that number. So.
We'll handle the public comment, just like we do in a regular meeting. If somebody has public comment, now's the time, raise your hand, and we'll recognize you and let you give, you start out with five minutes and speak your piece. Tell us what you think.
Very good.
Steven Russo.
Russo, yes.
Hi. You have a public comment?
Yes, I do. You know, I believe that the the current E triple P is a very stringent standard for performance for school psychologists in general. And the board had agreed years ago to to do away with the that other component of the defending of the of the cases and such. And I believe that that was a good decision on the part of the board to be done with that. Because as practicing school psychologists, I believe that we have already proved ourselves worthy of being able to do the job. I get that the standards are much higher for the LPs, but I have been practicing as a school psychologist now for 26 years here in Detni SD, and feel like the addition of the extra requirement for the E triple P is is not acceptable. I do not believe that that it should be a requirement for us. That's that's my comment.
Very good.
Let me, Mr. Chair, since this is kind of an interactive, if that is a kind of a thought that is floating around out in the public, let me, let me be clear that the school psychologists or LSSPs would not be required to undertake, just they're not required to undertake the part one, and they would not be required to undertake part two, just as an FYI, the the E triple P is only going to apply to LPA and LP, Licensed Psychological Associates and Licensed Psychologists. It will not apply to the LSSPs, just so that we dispel any kind of myths or rumors that are out there right now.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Spinks.
Hey, Mr. Kip. Could you pronounce your last name for me, please?
Sure. It's Petronio.
Thank you.
And if you, if we could just everyone state their full name, title for the record, and if they're with or representing any organization or themselves.
Okay, so it's Kip Petronio. I'm an Assistant Professor of Psychiatry at the University of Texas Southwestern Medical Center. I am a TPA. I'm a former TPA Board Member, and I am the past Chair of the Academic and Higher Education Committee. I will say I've not been formally given permission to speak on behalf of TPA or anything like that. So just very clearly, I actually just have a question related to, I feel like I don't have a full understanding about the antitrust argument that I that I've been, and and this has just been conveyed to me through TPA, that one of the concerns here about adopting it would be that it would violate antitrust regulation in the state of Texas. So I was just wondering if somebody could explain that.
Good. I'm going to take a stab at that, and I'll let the lawyers stop me when I'm wrong. So antitrust laws are generally, that's more of a federal issue. I'm sure there's something that statewide, but generally, that's a federal issue. It's not necessarily an anti, I don't see it as really an antitrust thing. What it's more of is a restraint of trade thing, which then bubbles over into the antitrust laws. The question being, when we're going to enact any regulation for any reason or any requirement, that is, by its definition, a restraint of trade. And there's usually accompanied by a great reason for that. And usually, in the interest, specifically, we can point to something in public safety or good governance, or there's something that we can hang our hat on that says, we need this rule or need this standard for this reason, and we're going to do it. In this case, we've asked, I've asked, we've all been candidly, I mean, I've been looking for any shred of anything to hang my hat on and say, yep, we got to do this. It should be a lot easier if we just went along with it. But I can't find anything that says, what problem are we solving for? And since we got rid of the oral exam back in, was it 2017? 2017, we got, we got rid of the the orals. The wheels of psychology have not fallen off. We can't find any appreciable change in complaints, problems, unsafe practitioners. And so now, when we're looking at this and saying, okay, well, why do we have to adopt the second test, this additional, it has additional cost, significant additional cost? Why? What are we solving for here? The answer is, we're kind of shrugging our shoulders and don't have it. And so if we could hang our hat on something, then maybe we have a reason to adopt this second test. But absent that, if somebody feel felt like, you know, there've been questions about discrimination, if somebody felt aggrieved or discriminated against by this new standard, that's where I'm probably getting out of my skis. But the point is, is that I think they could come to us and say, I've, you've restrained my trade for no good reason. It's discriminated against me, and I'm going to bring action now against the agency. Like, is that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that that's, it's not quite antitrust per se, but it's more of the restraint of trade issue that we can't really answer.
Correct.
That's a great question. And that's why we're here today, to be able to have this conversation. Dr. Kip, I'm going to mispronounce your name again. Petri, it's on it. Say it for us again.
Petronio.
Petronio. Okay. Well, people mispronounce my name, too. So you're in good company. What, do you have any other questions?
No, that was, that was extremely helpful. Thank you. Thank you. I don't think anybody at TPA really understood it completely. And we were all kind of scratching our heads at the board meeting when it was discussed, like, we didn't, you know, and the same thing, we don't, we don't have a lawyer in the room necessarily to kind of explain it to us. Is ASPB's argument that the knowledge test is not sufficient for practice? And that that's why this, like, it's not protecting the public because it's based on knowledge, and that that's why the need for the skills test is there? Is that their justification?
That's one justification I've heard. I'm curious from the board. I don't want to speak for the whole board here. Does anybody else want to speak up to what you guys have heard?
So that's part of it. And the other part was, so going back, and there are probably some people in the attendee box that have some of this perspective as well, is going back, you know, 10, 15 years, there was a desire in the field of psychology to have a competency-based practice exam that was more reflective of true licensure standards. So E triple P one is a knowledge-based exam that doesn't really reflect, you know, what we do as practitioners. And so there was always this idea, well, could we standardize something that was more reflective of the practice of psychology? And so the development of the E triple P two was really meant to fill that gap and standardize what a an oral exam looked like for those states that used orals, much like the Texas oral, there are other orals across the United States that had equal, if not more scrutiny. And so the E triple P two was meant to be a justification of standardization of that process. And so I think what what many states have really criticized and taken issue with is the mandate of adaptation without the proof of validation, and also that many states had always thought that we would have the opportunity to replace E triple P one with E triple P two and have the choice between tests, not sort of this force mandate of all or nothing, both tests with two parts. And I think that is where there's some disparity in understanding what is happening right now with this process. So again, I think it was, it was meant to provide that practical understanding of what minimum basic acceptability is in a competency-based test.
Mr. Zagaris.
Thank you. Thank you. And appreciate all the the quality comments. Dr. Becker, at our, at our last meeting, what struck me most about that meeting was, you repeated it several times, and I, I appreciate it because we need to think, show me the facts, show me the numbers, show me where where we're at in terms of discrimination and how it'll affect a different, what is it, groups that that take the test, geographic and and socioeconomic groups. And so fortunately, Dr. Singh presented a video that was, I believe, a conference, and I tried to look for it. I'm a computer illiterate individual. I couldn't find the dumb thing. So it was a conference in Toronto, I want to say about close to a year ago. And I hope those of us on the board saw it. It's about almost two hours. And you saw that one, Dr. Becker? Okay, good. Dr. Song was in there, and she presented, for the most part. They gave a lot of data. Now, before I had seen this video, I was against adopting the triple P. After seeing the video, I am leaning towards adopting the triple P. And regarding the comments about there hasn't been any fall off of psychology since 2017, they pointed out there that there's been an increasing number of practice-related complaints and issues, people doing stuff that they're not qualified to do, and they're relating this back to the lack of the oral exam being the the knowledge, I mean, the practical part of practicing our our profession. So if we don't have an oral exam, if we don't have, other than the school's word for it, that this person is competent, you know, we got to have something there. And I'm glad that everybody starts off their talk by saying that we're not against testing and and an entrance exam and stuff. But I do believe my position on competency is that you don't get competency from going to school. You have to work, and you have to develop skills. So thank you for letting me put that in there. But if somebody hasn't seen that video, and I guess you have to take it for granted that these people are presenting valid information, not just because I, you know, what worried me was that the lady, Dr. Song, I don't know if she's an independent person, I would like to see some replication studies, you know, give it to some different states and let them try it out and and make sure that whatever data they presented has been proven. And I think I've talked long enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zagaris. Dr. Petronio, did I say that correctly this time?
Yes, you did.
Very good. Any other things before we let you go?
No, I just, I really appreciate the board taking a stance of like, you know, protecting us in this way and taking the stance of the protecting that we will have an exam of some kind. I really appreciate the clarity around that. I don't think that has always been clear, at least through the TPA realm, and that's really appreciated. So.
Let me comment one last thing on on that about an exam. That is in statute. That is by law. And so we must, by law, have an exam. So that's, that's nonnegotiable unless the legislature wanted to change that for us. We don't have that prerogative. They legislate, we can rule make. But and, you know, in terms of the operation of that, we, the law, the law could say you're going to jump two feet. We could have a rule that says you jump two feet. The function's the same. The reality is, is to change one of them, the legislature would have to do it. If we did it by rule, it would be our prerogative, so long as it's within the purview of, you know, what we're regulating here. But by law, we must have a test. Functionally, E triple P has been the test since the 60s. And we, again, we don't, we don't own it. So I'm glad you brought that up. I just wanted to get that out there for everybody. That is by law, and we cannot decide to not have a test. Dr. Lambden.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Okay. So one thing I wanted to, I think, bring up, in case people don't have this knowledge, and I, I'm sorry for those people that do remember it, but I wanted to repeat it just for clarity so that we're all on the same page. And it's basically that come January 1st, 2026, when no longer not adoption, there is, it becomes now a requirement as of January 1st, 2026, to adopt the E triple P part two, the skills section, part of the exam. As of that date, it becomes one exam. There is no longer a part one and a part two, as two separate tests. It is only one test at that point. So I'm not sure what's going to happen between now and then. And I think this is part of the reason why we're having this discussion. Discussion is to talk about the pros and the cons of adopting the second portion. But I think it, it's important for all of us to keep in mind that as of that date, we no longer have the access to even the E triple P part one, should we choose not to adopt E triple P part two.
Thank you, Dr. Lamb. Great comments. All right. Next, I'm sorry, Dr. Cartwright. Go ahead before we get the next comment.
Yeah, and I think one other thing is, the whole point of like, as E triple P part one would then be at the point of knowledge acquisition, which is essentially almost like at the end of your clinical training, you would have take that, that, I guess, part one of the exam. Not exactly sure where you take part two. I guess that's, I don't know if that's after that practicum year, or not practicum year, I'm sorry, postdoctoral year, but, you know, you're saying it's all in one. So would that competency-based piece be given also at that point? Or would that be given later? And if it's all one, then like, I guess that would be a question to have. But I think it's, that's another point to take in mind is that this is actually going to be like, the actual time that it's taken is going to be built into programs, into the actual clinical program, which is significant, too, and just something to consider and to think about as we, you know, look at these, look at these options that are kind of on the board here.
All right, Mr. Adler.
Yes, thank you. We're talking about, talking about the legislature earlier, and I, and I think another consideration for the difficulty we're facing here is even if we choose to adopt, you know, E triple P two, because like, Chair, Mr. Chair, you said it's in the law, this would have to be run by the legislature as well. Is that correct?
No, that's not, that's not what I'm saying there. The point is, is that we can't choose to not have a test. We can't get to this deadline and say, yeah, we're just, we're just not going to have a test. We're going to figure, you know, we'll just, you know, do something else. We cannot do that. We must have by law a test.
Sure. And if we were to choose to elect to do, to accept E triple P two, we would have to explain to the legislature why this is necessary, an additional barrier to licensure, when we've already gotten rid of the oral exam similarly, because it was proved to be not necessary.
Legally, legally, do we have to answer to the legislature to say why we did this? No. Now, that said, I have been over there, and, you know, we all read the report that came after Uvalde in terms of making sure that we're streamlining our procedures, reducing unnecessary or outdated, out, just things that are not needed anymore or pertinent. So we've done a lot of that. This, if anyone, if we're in a hearing over there, when we have to talk about budgets or anything else, and anybody asks us about that, like, are you reducing or streamlining? Like, well, no, actually, we added this other test. We added this extra hurdle. So practically speaking, I, I think that we would have some explaining to do because I think just empirically, this goes against everything we've been working on as an agency to to make this more efficient, to figure out how do we get more people into the profession while also protecting standards. So does that answer your question?
Yes. And I think especially, you know, considering the Uvalde, obviously, this would impact the rural areas as well, which is something that we've been trying to really increase practitioners in those areas. So.
And let me add one other thing, too, just about the practical, the practical, I'm talking about more of the political implications of how that, what adoption would look like. Let's talk about the practical, just mechanics of adopting it. So let's just say the board, all of us agree, or majority of the board agree, yep, we're going to adopt this. Then it goes over to BHEC. It also gets cleared with the governor's, what is, I'm sorry, Regulatory.
Regulatory Compliance Division.
Regulatory Clients, Compliance Division, to see if it's going to pass good governance standards. What are the other metrics that they're going to look at?
Is it anti-competitive or restrain the trade? Can you just, does the public protection benefit outweigh any regulatory burden?
Okay, so.
In a nutshell.
All right. So you guys got that. As soon as we decide, let's say we agree that the benefits outweigh the risks, there's a whole nother entity that gets another bite at that apple to have the same conversation. And the question is, is would they come to the same conclusion that we did? And I don't, I don't think so. They haven't said so. I haven't asked them, but I don't think so. So that's where we would run into that buzzsaw there. And then when Chair Kenseko asked me when it comes before BHEC, Chair Belamowitz, tell us, why have you brought this here? And why is it a great idea? And I would probably honestly tell her, I, I'm not convinced that it's a good idea, but we don't have a choice. You know, so that's, that would be the practical mechanics of how this would get adopted. And as you see there, like, there's multiple buzzsaws that this thing runs into, even if we just decided to put it on our backs and say, let's just suck it up and do it.
Not, not to mention Governor Abbott's, I think it was 2018 or 2019 letter where he directed all state agencies to streamline their licensing process. This is before Uvalde.
Yeah.
There was already a gubernatorial memo sent out that we were directed to reduce fees and streamline our our operations to
Uh, there was already a gubernatorial uh memo sent out that we were directed to reduce fees and streamline our our operations to to reduce unnecessary barriers.
So, Mr. Spinks, so how does this reduce your barriers or streamline things for it will be the question.
You're correct.
And here we are. So I think you guys can figure out how that answer goes. Um, any other thoughts before we get to the next comment?
Yeah, I just wanna say, so, yeah, so I mean, obviously, there's a whole nother body, like, you know, the governor's office and, you know, the the regulatory, you know, compliance commission that is gonna have to, you know, be a part of, even if we choose to adopt E triple P two, that's within our control to start that first few steps of the process. But after that, it's out of our control whether be, whether it reaches full adoption. And that is something that um for those reasons, like you said, Mr. Chair, um, we, we, we would not be able to, you know, uh force this issue happening if we wanted to.
Right. Did we lose, we're good? Okay, we just lost our screens here for a second. I think the other um as Chair, I feel like a big part of my job is to try to see around corners and try to make sure that we don't get ourselves into a bind. And Mr. Adler, your your question there highlights, I think, the problem that that I've identified, I think the board's identified, staff has identified. And if we don't try to address that, and if we run into that buzzsaw with six months to go or three months to go, we're, we're in a real, real bind because then we really don't have a test and we're actually in violation of the law. And we're actually doesn't matter from the violation of the law, we just don't have a test. And ASPB said, sorry, you can't have access to it. So um that's why.
I actually think that's one of the problems that we have to bring to ASPB.
Yeah.
Which is one of the reasons why we're having this town hall.
That's correct. Dr. Cartwright?
Yeah, is there a way that we can, I mean, that we can go to the legislature and just ask their opinion on it, almost like what we've done with like, where we've asked it for the AG opinion on different issues? Is there a way to just get kind of like a almost like a summary statement or a response of what, how they feel about it, or do they not wanna hear about it till it till it goes to that level? Just kind of a question, more or less, but um I mean, reaching out, seeing what, and then if there is a response, we could have some, something to show ASPB when we do start negotiations and when we're, you know, when we, when we meet with them and and meetings going forward, and especially at the meetings that are coming up with ASPB.
Thirty-six senators in Texas, right?
Hmm.
Thirty-something. You're talking about a hundred, there's a hundred and fifty legislators uh in the House, and you're talking about uh thirty-six in the Senate. So you're asking um, Dr. Cartwright, it's a good question, but you're asking for the collective opinion of a hundred and eighty some odd people. Um, of which, I mean, we just had elections and primaries here in Texas that the the Texas Legislature is definitely in a state of flux. I think I can safely say that today. Um, I don't know who you ask. And the 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 only thing I know to know what the legislature thinks is to think about the laws that they've spoken through, the laws that they have passed. The law says thou shalt have a test. The governor hath signed that at some point whenever that law was passed. And that's that's all I know about what the legislature thinks, that we are gonna have a test. Unless they wanna just take it up and say, we're not gonna have a test. But I I don't particularly see that happening. All right.
Ready.
Next comment? I'm sorry, Dr. Singh, Dr. You're muted, Dr. Singh.
Yes, I just have a short comment. And uh we we will have to have, if if uh one way or the other, we'll just have to have this test. Uh, because right now, the way the law is um and the way the company is working, we won't have any choice. But because twenty-six January is around the corner, it's not that far. And unless, you know, legislature changes something. And but I, just for those, because I'm sure some of the uh public members who are concerned and are listening are the either future or very soon to be test takers. Uh, the two thousand seventeen report, report by ASPB found that over eighty percent of candidates from credited doctoral programs passed the first uh but that's the the first year they took. Uh, so the, so far, the statistics is not that bad about test, this test. And a long time ago, I used to administer those uh oral exams and there were similar um scenario. And they were not all that bad either. So it may be that uh because uh one negative thing about this is the additional fees if we have to add. But other than that, um e- even if we are forced to adopt it and which were being, I feel like, and uh we will have to see it for a while, how it goes before there is any argument for the legislature to act one way or the other about it. That's what I think.
Dr. Lamden? You're muted, Dr. Lamden.
Sorry about that. Dr. Singh, if you could please clarify, uh the pass rates that you just quoted, was that E triple P part one or P E triple P part two?
Two.
That was E triple P part two?
Yeah.
Okay, I I was unaware of those uh pass rates.
Yeah, that's, they've been uh, they've been uh, they don't have that much, you know, uh that that much data. But the states that have adopted, I think they took it from them, or they had a study uh just with this. I'm not right now remembering everything, but I just, what I just read, uh I read it from uh uh information about the uh the part two.
Yes, it's my understanding that currently.
And master's level has a much lower pass rate, fifty-three percent.
Yes, it's my understanding that currently it is the state of Georgia, the state of Nevada, and Washington DC are the only jurisdictions that are currently administering the exam.
I think there are four of them. Right now, they're saying, Glenn.
Okay, I'm not sure of that fourth one. I I wasn't aware.
Well, we'll get to that. Okay, so we're still in public comment, so I wanna get back to that. Uh, Mr. Adler, do you have something quick before we get to?
Yes.
Growth use?
Yes, Dr. Singh, did you say that, say, was two thousand seventeen?
Yes, two thousand seventeen.
And E triple P was being, I don't think it was being given.
I I think it was the study done with it.
Uh, yeah, okay, okay.
So let's, we're gonna have time to discuss this too as a board after public comment. Let's um moving forward, let's do this. As we go through public comment, um we all have the opportunity to to ask whoever's giving public comment something. And if we had a quick follow up to something they said, let's try to uh keep our, confine our comments to whoever is in front of us. And that way we can keep chewing through public comment because that is why we're here today. So, all right. So with that, let's go to Dr. Growth Use. Dr. Growth Use, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Belamowitz. I appreciate it. And I do um wanna thank all of you for how hosting this meeting and getting some feedback. I am um a licensed psychologist speaking on behalf of myself today, even though I do represent TPA many occasions and and will come to you with that representation. The fact is, we really haven't had a consensus exactly about this, this test and what we should do about this test. There certainly are concerns about the bias and discrimination issues, which we would have been told were addressed appropriately by ASPB. But as Dr. Becker said, no data has been provided. And I think that would be a major um sticking point to add a test that has a potential bias, especially against uh lower representative groups, and we know we need psychologists to represent those groups. And that's, it's a, it's a big shortage area. The questions about the streamline, though, as we read the information that you provided, um we definitely want psychology not to be the outlier, to have no standardized assessment of competency. And from my perspective, as uh TPA president in two thousand seventeen, when we did away with the oral exam, the, the belief at that time was that ASPB will be replacing it with the written exam. And we were happen, happy to have a replacement. It just took too long. If there was a more timely replacement five years ago, or even, you know, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, I think we would all feel better about having that. And one of the benefits that I can see is primarily one that's more of a national standard if other states adopt. But as we've seen, that's like, most states have not adopted yet. And that's, that's a big concern, which is why the big goal that we've asked you to do is to push back, push back on ASPB for the timeline to be able to get that and see what other states do as well. I do think it's important to have the test. I'm glad to hear that that not having a written exam is is being considered as an option. I think that is an important part of it. I do think you can answer the streamlined test by the timing of the test. I do appreciate that we will move the E triple P one to an earlier time during training when knowledge is more quintessential. And then the clinical part will be done during the postdoc year. And then they'll be ready for application for licensure immediately upon passing that. Whereas before, you had to complete that year before you could take the oral exam. So there are ways in the timeliness of the training that you can streamline it. And now we're only looking at an additional cost, which really isn't an addition because it was there prior to twenty seventeen. It's just going back to that. So all of those, all of those factors, I hope you consider when you think about the next steps.
Thank you, Dr. Growth Use. I have a, Dr. Growth Use, don't go away. I have a question.
Okay.
And this has been coming up, and I'm curious of your thoughts on this um about when the E triple P one is given, because there's been the discussion of moving it not really as a capstone, like, have you, do you have the knowledge? They've been talking about moving it into your training closer to the point of learning. Like, that sounds great. And my question, though, is, is that if that's not testing the skills to cut somebody loose into the profession, I feel like I'd wanna know, like, at the end of their training, do you still have the knowledge? Not, did you learn it like in the middle of it? Because I was just thinking about classes that I took in business school or the different pilot certificates that I've gone for. Um, I could probably pass a commercial pilot written exam today still, but I wouldn't do very well on it. I think I'd pass it, but I would I bet on it? Like, I don't know.
Um, no, I, yeah, it's, I understand. I'm sorry, I interrupted you. I.
No, 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 I'm just gonna, go ahead.
That um, it's just, it's not in the middle of their training. So most psychology doctoral programs are four years of clinic of of graduate training and then one year of internship, and then they have a postdoc. So what we were talking about is prior to their graduation from their program, they pass the E triple P one. So it would really be like right before they start their internship training. They they produce this, this competency of knowledge. They have their internship training, training and postdoc, and then take the clinical part. Which makes a lot of sense, which was, which was what Mr. Zegras was saying, that you need that clinical training in order to to demonstrate that clinical competency.
Yeah, I don't, I don't dispute that. Um, thank you, Dr. Growth Use.
And I think that could happen. Um, and and ASPB is pushing this really hard. I think we as a board, and I think Texas would have to think about that really thoughtfully because it would take some cooperation and collaboration with the large number of training facilities that we have in our state. Um, and and some level of collaboration around whether we would alter where E triple P one is accepted in the licensure process because that would move it pre-licensure. Because right now, E triple P one is in the licensure process and to move E triple P into graduate school would make it prior to the licensure realm. And so that muddies the waters a little bit. And if you're going to do that, that means that every psychologist person, every psychologist is going to be applying to the LPA route, which is how some programs do it now. Um, or we have to create a separate pathway by which to make this happen from a regulatory perspective, which is what I put out there at the beginning around the regulatory changes that we would need in this state to make this a viable pathway. Um, this is the pathway that Nevada has, by the way, to make this work, um is that they moved it into the graduate programs. But I think that there are probably far fewer graduate programs in Nevada than there are in Texas. So I think just understanding what that undertaking would mean to move this as to say, make this like a clinical exam, a clinical practice exam or a graduate exam into a graduate doctoral program. That's, that is a completely different discussion, but that would also take the cooperation of graduate programs, of which this board does not have purview of. And so that's something else to consider.
Thank you, Dr. Becker. What are we up to on attendees, by the way, right now?
One twenty-one.
All right, thank you. Um, Dr. Growth Use, thank you very much for being here and providing and participating uh in this process. Really appreciate it. You bet. I can't see, do we have a bunch of hands raised? Or I can't, I have no visibility.
Now, we have.
Just curious for for pacing.
Five raised then.
Okay.
Dr. Ryan Cooper?
Hey there, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can, Dr. Cooper. Thank you for being here. Take it away.
Thanks. Um, I'm gonna actually pull over because I'm on my way to see a patient. So my name's Dr. Ryan Cooper. I'm in Paris, Texas. And like Kip and Carol both said, I am a member of the TPA board. But my comments here just represent my own personal comments. Um, I tried to submit a written comment, but I was too late. But I kinda wanna highlight three concerns that I had and one suggestion. Um, because I think what you guys really need is some creative ideas. So my first comment was what somebody else has already said. Um, I don't think we actually have a problem, right? Like, I didn't take step two or part two of the the E triple P. I don't think I'm lacking competence. My school taught me that. So I don't think there's a demonstrable problem that we need to solve. Um, my second comment was, E triple P one sucks. Like, already it has so many criticisms. And and like Carol said, ASPB has tried to address some of those. Um, we, you know, they, they, they came out with the like, they're redoing their items right now to make sure they're sensitive to race and cultural differences. Um, but number one, that took forever for them to do. And number two, research just keeps coming out. I don't know if you guys know, a research article was published this year um that basically said there's no statistical um, no statistically significant correlation between somebody's E triple P one scores and the way their graduate professors rated their competence. That's a huge blow to E triple P one. And I think it's what we all knew. It doesn't actually measure competence at all. It measures your ability to memorize things and to take really good tests, which is why people with privilege usually do better on those. So that's kind of my second point is that E triple P one already fails. So whatever our solution is, kind of probably needs to involve some address to E triple P one. My third point before my suggestion was um, I don't remember the lady's name who spoke before me, but she talked about how this really only adds a cost barrier, an additional cost barrier. I completely disagree. That's the obvious barrier that it adds. But and and I passed E triple P, E triple P one my first time. It was probably somewhat related to my privilege, but there's a time investment. Every time you have to sit for a licensure piece, like we talk, think of medical school, right? They do a couple, they do three steps to their licensure exam. Every single time they come up to that, that's a time investment. Aside from money and time, it's also a mental health investment. That time Texans could be using, starting their practice, putting their money into their practice, that kind of stuff. Okay. So those are my three complaints. Here's my suggestion. I'm I'm with you guys. We can't not have an exam, right? So how can we address the E triple P one issue and also keep the exam? Well, ASPB does not say what our cutoff score has to be. They recommend five hundred, but they have no authority to actually tell Texas what it needs to be. So my suggestion is what if students take E triple P one at the the stage whenever they finish graduate training, right? Um, before they actually start their internship or residency? If they make a five hundred, great, you still have to take E triple P two, but you're already, you're already qualified for licensure in Texas. You could essentially take two and bomb it if you want to. You've made it at a five hundred on E triple P one, just like it is now. And you're in the clear, aside from having to actually sit for part two. But let's say somebody takes that, particularly minorities, because we know that's who are disproportionately affected on E triple P one. Let's say they make a four hundred. Okay, great. You've passed at the four hundred level, which kind of the master's level. You still have to take E triple P two and pass that at the four hundred level as well. Otherwise, you know, so I I just, I guess what I'm saying to you guys is we can be creative in how you apply E triple P two. And you can do it in a way that reduces the burden of E triple P one and what we know about its weaknesses. That was all.
You're saying, let me ask, so you're you're saying essentially that they bomb E triple P two, we just say, we don't care. Never mind. You gotta go pay the money, pay them their their money, go take the test. Go write your name.
Why even sit for it?
Yeah, why sit for it? Yeah, just pay.
Right. Well, well, that's true. You could just pay the money and ASPB gets their money. Now, I don't actually think in practice, that's what would happen, right? Nobody's gonna take E triple P two and just bomb it. Because you won't have licensure mobility to other states, right? So if you don't take E triple P two. So if you don't take E triple P two and Texas says, okay, great, you can be licensed here, you can't be licensed anywhere else. So nobody's going to take part two and bomb it. But it does reduce that emotional and and stress and time barrier. Good test takers, they'll probably take part one and pass it. I studied for three months and passed it. I could probably study for three, three months and pass E triple P part two. But I'm not everybody.
Right.
And I think at least lowering those burdens and saying either pass each one of them at a lower burden, at a lower standard, but but combined, you have to pass both of them at this. Or if you pass either one of them, so let's say that they took part one and they made a four ninety-five. They can take part two and pass that at the five hundred or whatever the equivalent level would be and not have to retake E triple P one unless they wanted to move to another state.
Gotcha. So you're saying allow the part two is almost a second bite at the apple if they don't?
Exactly, because ASPB has no control over how you guys actually use the test.
Right, but ASPB does control. I think they do control, though, your ability to whether or not. I think you're, I think they're going to set it up so that it has, you have to pass part one before you're eligible to sit for part two. So I'm not sure that it will work in that way.
Yeah, if that's what they're going to do, you're absolutely right. Then there's, there's, there's no way. But that is now encroaching on Texas's ability to set the, like, E triple P has never set what the pass rate is. They, all states use five hundred, right? But they don't have to. Even the printout says, the printout that we get when we pass it, says, this is what ASPB recommends, but hey, talk to your state licensure board, they get to decide.
I think the encroachment question, that that horse has left the barns. That's what we're here.
Yeah.
Right, right, possibly. But I thank, thanks for the time. I do invite you guys to please keep in mind, research is consistently coming out that says E triple P one does not do what it's supposed to do. It's just.
Doctor, I'm not, I don't, I don't know, maybe the board has seen that. This is, this is John Belamowitz here. I've not seen that. If you want to send that to the board for us to take a look at.
Yeah, I, I, I actually emailed, I emailed Monica and I tried to email you as well, but I I just guessed at what your email address was. But there's actually about six or seven different studies that look at this now. So if that's not your email, check with Monica. She also has my reference.
You didn't stand a chance at spelling his name right.
Probably right, yeah.
Yeah, we'll, I'll, we'll get with Monica and see if we can get that. Dr. Cooper, thank you for, for your time. Anybody else have anything for Dr. Cooper before we let him go? All right, thank you, Dr.
Appreciate it, guys. Thanks. Bye.
Yeah, thank you.
Good discussion. Appreciate this. Okay, who we have next?
We have Ms. Antonette McGarhan.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm a licensed psychologist in private practice for the past twenty-four years. I have one question real quick, based on the Dr. Cooper, which is I thought I heard Dr. Lambden say that once it's adopted as of January of twenty twenty-six, there is no sitting for part one and then part two, that it becomes one test. Do I understand that correctly?
It's one of the two parts is how they defined it.
Oh, okay, so there still would be two parts. All right. I I guess the other question I have is if we are mandated by law to have a test and if we decide not to adopt this test with two parts, what are the alternatives? What are other options? What are there other metrics that other jurisdictions are using? Or as Dr. Singh is saying, is this a forced, I mean, are we forced to do this if we're mandated between a rock and a hard place to have a test? And there's no other option, no other equivalent to an E triple P or something, then, then we're stuck with having to adopt it?
This is, this is John Belamowitz. I'll, I'll jump on the grenade. We're making this parachute as we're falling right now. We don't really, we don't really know. And that's part of why we're here. We've had the discussion of what does a new test look like with other states? Because there, we, this is very, we're, I think Texas is kind of on the cutting edge of having these discussions. A lot of states, especially smaller states, it feels like have this kind of fatalistic, like, we don't have an alternative, we're just gonna, we're just gonna go with it. Texas is interesting in the fact that we've, in response to some Supreme Court decisions, that's part of why BHEC exists as an umbrella agency. And part of that makes it very difficult to expand regulation in this way. So Texas, in a way, structurally, legally, mechanically, is just, we're just not set up to, you know, rubber stamp this and just say, no problem. It's set up to, that we've got to answer a lot of questions. So the legislature did that when they created BHEC. And if we are unable to adopt this, I, I mean, the legislature is going to be aware of where we have a problem and we're going to need some money and resources and then figure out what other states are having the same problem, if they do, are we going to do a new test? That would be, that's the, that's the only alternative that I know of that if ASPB is immovable. That said, ASPB could solve this problem for us today, tomorrow, by extending this deadline. We're, we're up for sunset review with the legislature sunset being, I'm sorry, is it ten, twelve years, ten years? What?
Twenty thirty-three.
What, I mean, what's the interval for?
Twelve-year interval.
So every twelve years in Texas, every agency goes through sunset to say, does this agency have a reason to still exist? When if, or, and if, what needs changing with it? So Texas, we're in the middle of that cycle. That would be a logical time for the legislature to look at this. And it would be great if ASPB could essentially solve this for us by, you know, ASPB is supposed to be a reflection of the needs of the regu, of the states and the regulatory needs of each state. That would be a logical time to do it. But yeah, that's, you, you are asking the question, is it Dr. McGarhan, is that right?
Yes, correct.
You're asking the question that we've all been wrestling with since when Executive Director Spinks and I were in Maryland at the ASPB annual meeting a year and a half ago. I'm standing in the back of the room and, and they announced this and the email went out, you know, to say that E triple P two is now going to be mandatory. There wasn't a discussion, there wasn't a debate, there wasn't a vote. It was decided by the executive board of ASPB, which is the executive board is elected by the membership. But it wasn't done in a forum like this where, you know, even public comment from, from the member states was even solicited. It was, we were told this is what's happening. I told them then that I recognized the structural problems of how the regulatory structure in Texas is. I told them what kind of problems I thought we may have. You know, never mind the wisdom of it, whether it's a great idea or bad idea, just mechanically is going to be tough. But Dr. McGarhan, you ask the million-dollar question and I don't have a great answer for you. That's why we're here today.
Understood. I appreciate it.
Akiva Lorenz?
Hi there. I actually, my name is Sarah Lorenz. And that's all right. And I have a doctorate from California Southern University, which is an online, but it is a accredited program. And so part of the concern would be incorporated into a program that is regionally accredited, but not yet housed in, in Texas. Many of my peers, many of my colleagues have had a lot of struggles passing the E triple P part one as it is. And we're very concerned about what this has done to us emotionally, financially. Patients aren't able to see us anymore because we lose essentially our, our license status. Many of my colleagues have left the world of psychology and gone into the world of counseling, basically saying, hey, is this close enough to get a license in, in, in one of your areas? So they'll come out with an LPC. Many of us happen to come from a background with counseling, such as myself. And I'm practicing under my LPC license because of the high failure rate within the E triple P part one. It was already referenced to basically do what we need to do here in Texas. I'm aware of Arizona, who has basically rejected the E triple P part two. I'm aware of other states who have come up with different numbers for passing rates. Perhaps Michigan is the lowest at three fifty for the LPA level. I do think that we can get creative, we can get clever, we can talk about things, but there has to be an honest conversation with stakeholders. And that includes us who are here in private practice. That includes us who are trying desperately to claw our way into the field. And we are trying so hard, spending lots of money and time, there's still barriers. There's still a lot of barriers for us to get through this, because this license exam is for a license. So content-wise, there's a lot of struggles that people have in terms of, of knowledge base. We are not told where to go, what to do. We don't get feedback. We feel very lost. We feel very unheard, very unseen. And that's a very big struggle. So I wanted to take a moment to appreciate the fact that we're allowed to talk here in a public forum. Thank you for considering what we, the people on the ground, if you will, have to say. It's important to us to be heard.
Dr. Lorenz, really appreciate your comment here today. I want to, you said one thing, I think I can clear this up. I don't want to speak for Arizona, but from what I've heard with Arizona is they adopted E triple P two and then did not and walked it back. Apparently, I think it was a delay. I think they're, what I understand is they're gonna adopt it. And I think there are two, I think there's two board members on ASPB's board that are from Arizona. But I think it's more of a, the fact that they did it and undid it has more to do with timing rather than their willingness to do it. So I think they're going to do it. I think Nevada is planning on doing it. The, the board chair of ASPB is from Nevada. I think Georgia. I don't know. It's, it's a handful. But Arizona, I want to just, I, I think that they are planning on doing it. I don't think that's a wholesale rejection there. Is there, did you, do you know different or is that?
Yeah, that's accurate. Yeah.
Okay.
But currently, the, the states that already are using E triple P part two is District of Columbia, Georgia, Guam, Manitoba, Nevada, and Newfoundland and Labrador.
All right.
Next comment.
Thank you, Dr. Lorenz.
Dr. Yvonne Estrella?
Hi, thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak about this matter. I am Dr. Yvonne Estrella and I'm a bilingual school psychologist in central Texas. I work for a school district and my views represent myself and not my workplace. I am here to advocate for others like myself who are first-generation students. The added expense could be detrimental. Additionally, please consider the added expense this can cause to individuals who are new to the field or those who work in settings such as school districts or nonprofit organizations that might not be paid as much as other settings. Some of us delay the test due to the added expense shortly after graduating because we do not have the funding to pay for this expense. As young professionals, it is already stressful to adjust to the profession and student loan payments. The added expense that the E triple P causes is huge, from tutoring, study programs, materials, practice tests, in addition to the cost of the application, the test, and even sitting for the test. Some of us also have to take time off work for this and we do not get paid for that. I also supervise graduate students in practicum and internship settings. And I often hear that the expense of a PhD in licensure prevents them from even pursuing being an LPA and they don't even consider becoming an LP. I wish I could recruit more bilingual professionals to become LPs or LPAs, but the additional expenses that already exist are causing barriers to this population. If part one was sufficient previously, we should continue to consider this as an option. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Estrella. Any questions for Dr. Estrella from the board? I just want to say, Dr. Estrella, thank you for your, the picture you paint of, of what it means for somebody to be entering the profession. I think that's valuable to have here on the record. So thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
You bet.
I want to share something on the heels of what Dr. Estrella just said. Because I think the reason that I got as heated as I did with ASPB around the issue of access to underserved populations and to our underserved psychologists is because one of the pieces of information that ASPB continues to share in all of their materials is that there is a practice effect with the E triple P two where they report that students who do practice items for the E triple two do significantly better by at least one standard deviation on the exam. However, the only practice exam items that are available are behind a paywall that is owned by ASPB. And that is where sort of my personal frustration around the equity piece of this got tipped off. And again, I, I know that that is a, a, a hotbed, but I, I feel very strongly about the things that you just talked about, Dr. Estrella. Because we are working very hard in this state to get more bilingual providers to our bilingual patients. And I, I don't have a problem with keeping our standards high when they make sense. But I'm not sure that that's what we're being asked to do here. And I'm trying to find the middle ground here and I'm not sure what that is. So I really, really appreciate your point.
Now, thank you so much for taking this into consideration, because I have been personally affected by those barriers. And I know others, like I said, that won't even consider it, no matter how I sell it to them, no matter how much I tell them that they could be making an impact in children's lives. Or even, you know, now that telehealth is so big, we could be providing telehealth to underserved communities. I used to conduct evaluations in underserved communities throughout graduate school to earn extra money to pay for my graduate education. And I, I can't convince them. And when they look at the expenses, they just don't even consider it. And the other thing I didn't mention is, you know, as a young professional, you're also trying to establish yourself. And somebody alluded to the fact that they can't even consider a private practice. Think about buying a home, starting a family. We have to hold off on certain things because we have to sometimes decide what's more important right now. What can I afford? What can I do? And I know someone else mentioned privilege before. Some of us don't have the privilege to ask people for money to take out additional loans. We've exhausted our funding, you know, sources. And so I really appreciate, you know, your words as well, just taking into consideration what I mentioned. Thank you.
Dr. Estrella, I have one more question for you. This is John Belamowitz. What, what drew, what drew you to the profession?
What drew me to the profession is that I am a, you know, I, I was from South Texas. I was one of the only people that graduated from my elementary school, you know, from high school. One of the, the first person in my family to get a college degree, a master's, even a PhD. And I wanted to help others like me. That's what drew me to the profession. Schools fostered me, I think, and created me into the person that I am. And that's why I still work in public schools, because I see the need. There's not individuals like me in the schools. There's not individuals training, individuals like me in the schools. And the need is so high, especially after COVID. I am drowning in evaluations, but I love what I do and, and they need the help. And sometimes schools are the only way that those parents, those children can get these services.
And you, I'm sorry, okay, so we're not putting your school district on blast. What, what part of the world are you in again, in Texas?
So I'm in the central Texas area.
Okay. So essentially, though, you, you, you're coming back. Are you, are you in an urban or rural area?
I'm more rural and we're, like, we are the only hub that the school, like, we don't even have a clinic in our area.
What, what's so important about your story is you're, 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 you are who we are trying to get more of. People who come from rural areas see a pathway into this profession and then you go back to where you were. Because what we're struggling with is seeing people coming out of these, the urban cores, Dallas, Fort Worth, Austin, Houston. They're not going into the valley. They're coming back to practice where they, where they're from in these urban centers, which are still underserved.
Yes.
Rural areas are, you know, how do we get more people like you who go back to home to provide these very needed services? So I very much appreciate you participating today in your comments.
Thank you so much.
Here we have Allison Fitzpatrick.
Good afternoon. My name is Allison Fitzpatrick. I am a PhD-level school psychologist practicing in a public school district in San Antonio. I'm currently not an LP or LPA, but I am interested in pursuing being, coming an LP. So this discussion is important to me. But my question, I, one, I wanted to echo what Dr. Estrella just talked about, the financial burden. That was one of the reasons I Um, that was one of the reasons I did not pursue private practice coming out of my doctoral program because um, where I was trained internship year is completely unpaid. Um, student loans were incredibly high, and I wanted to participate in the public service loan forgiveness program. Um, and I felt that the easiest route to do that was to be employed in a public school district. Um, so, but my question has to do with uh, those who are pursuing the LP within the next year or two before this becomes mandated. Uh, will we and other currently licensed psychologists be required to take the E triple P two after the fact, if we, if we, or are they grandfathered in if you pass the E triple P one now?
The exam goes into effect, if it, if we move to this, the exam goes into effect January one, twenty twenty six per ASPB.
So if you take the exam prior, if you take E triple P one and meet qualifications now, you will basically
You would not have to take another exam later.
Okay.
Once you take the exam and you get your license, you have a license.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
That, that, I mean, with, with no rule issues, no rule issues that we would have to adopt or change, looking at staff?
Well, we'd have to adopt some rule changes.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, in terms of how that would get grandfathered, that's, that's assuming we move to adopt it, but that's a mess.
I don't know off the top of my head on the.
As a practical, as it, yeah, as a practical thing, I'd totally echo what Dr. Becker just said, that prac, this board, again, without speaking for the board and before, there's no way we would um snag anybody like that. We would absolutely figure out how to grandfather them.
You can't retroactively impose a new exam on existing licensees.
Yeah, I think that's in the constitution, no ex post facto law.
Yeah, well, even if it's not, none of us would be on here very long once Governor Abbott found out about it.
Dr. Fitzpatrick, thank you for the question. It's a good one.
Thank you for letting us participate today.
Appreciate you being here very much.
Hey, Doris.
Um, this, I work as a staff member, uh, and I was concerned about the LPA.
Hold on, just a second, Doris.
Doris, would you please state your uh full name and here with the record?
Okay, it's Doris Legrevillek. I work with the BHEC in, as a licensed specialist for psychology.
Okay, sorry.
And Doris, we'll uh, we'll take your questions offline.
Okay.
You're a sta, you're a staff member. You've got access to us all the time.
Okay, you don't want it as part of the conversation. I was just
Yeah, no, no, no.
Okay, all right.
This is for the, for the public, really.
Marnie Richard.
Okay, so, um, so my name is Marnie Richard, and um, I'm a licensee. Um, I have two licenses with BHEC. Um, and one, one is a psychologist, so I already took the E triple P. Um, so I guess my concern, well, first, obviously, you need to do what you need to do to protect the public. I guess my concern would be um with any possible unintended consequences. So obviously, this will rule some people out. So some people won't become psychologists or LPAs. Um, uh, let's see. Um, and those will probably be people who aren't good test takers for whatever reason. Um, so you already, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is you already have many counties largely in more rural areas that don't have any providers whatsoever. So then I guess the question, my question would be then who steps in to fill those counties, fill that service? Um, would it be people that who don't have the training or have less training? And I I guess that would be my question and my concern. That would be my only concern.
I think, Dr. Richard, your, your question is, is unintended consequences of, of do we have fewer or less qualified uh practitioners if we were in rural areas?
Yeah, in especially rural areas, but in general, as a, as a result of adopting the step two. Because obviously, it'll rule some, um, it'll cut some people. Um, I know myself, I'm a good test taker, so if I'm ever faced with the E triple P step two, I I feel like for myself, the odds are good that I'll probably pass it at some point if I do need to take it. But there are probably quite a few people who won't for whatever reason, and are they, are they the right people? I I don't know.
Yeah, I I think you ask a great question, and I think it's one that we're all wrestling with of, of, and something as chair that I'm asking, challenging staff, like, okay, what's the second and third order effect if we do X, Y, or Z? And is this detrimental to getting more practitioners in the field? Um, and I think we're all very protective of so I hope no one will argue. I'm sure somebody will say I don't agree with this, but, but standards are very, very important. And the erosion, we don't want to just lower the standards to let people into the profession because we just need people. So let's just put more people out there. That's, that's not at all my ethos. I don't believe that's ethos of the staff um or this board, certainly not the professional members of this board. Um, and the nuance of that discussion is something I think you hear play out a lot if you pay attention to our meetings. Um, I think Dr. Australia, one of the commenters a, a few minutes ago, really laid out the cri, how critical it is that we are cognizant of the negative effects on rural populations. Um, because there's many counties where, I mean, I I've looked at this. I can't quote them chapter and verse this minute. But there are many, many counties in this state out of the two hundred and fifty-four that have one licensed psychologist. Sometimes none. Sometimes we have like four school psychologists. Like, it's, it's a, it's embarrassing. It's embarrassingly low. It's unacceptable. Um, and the reality is, we can't just like pump, this, this agency cannot pump out you know, more psychologists. That comes from our universities, uh, the marketplace, you know, um, why people are in the profession. It's not usually to get rich. It's because they have a passion for this. Um, and making lives better. So I think your question is, is right. It's when we ask ourselves, how is this gonna affect rural populations? Um, or just the population in general, but we certainly don't want to be taking action that would be detrimental to that end. Does that kind of answer your question?
Yeah.
Anybody else have any comments? From the board? Okay. Thank you so much for the question.
Ivan Chee.
Doctor.
He's on mute.
Yep, Dr. Ivan, you're on mute if you're talking. Dr. Ivan, you're on mute if uh, if you can hear us. Come back to Dr. Ivan. Dr. Ivan, if you can hear us, um, check, check if you can take the mute off, and we're gonna come back to you.
Daniel Kretschman.
Hi, uh, first of all, like, many people, thank you for listening to us and for explaining uh the process that's going on right now. I think it'll be important to the population. I'm a uh licensed psychologist. I work in Texas. I transferred about a couple of years ago from out of state, and that's something that I thought to be aware of is if there is no recognition of the E triple P, E triple P, um, how do people transfer in from out of state? What are they going to have to do if we have our own exam in Texas? Uh, and adjacent to that is, how is this going to impact on uh, SCIPAC? So if Nevada, for instance, is a member of SCIPAC, and we're not using the same exam, are they going to say, oh, this person's qualified to do practice in our state?
We put Patrick on the spot to talk about SCIPAC? You want to?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, i- if, if we had to develop our own exam, what I would recommend to the board is that you continue to accept the E triple P in addition to whatever exam that Texas developed. So that you have two ways to get in. Um, that way, if somebody chose to take the E triple P in a different part of the country, they could come here, rely on that score. And if they didn't have it and they were just coming in anew, then they could take our exam. Now, as far as SCIPAC goes, um, SCIPAC does require somebody to, you must have taken, I think, the E triple P, or you have to have taken the E triple P to get the credentials from ASPB that is then needed to practice in SCIPAC. Patrick, you correct me if I'm wrong, but um so I I don't think we can, I don't think we can completely divorce ourselves from the E triple P. You're going to have to, have to keep a relationship with it um, in order to you know, to have people still flowing into SCIPAC. Now, I don't think, let's just say we created our own exam and we just completely parted ways with the E triple P. I don't think that's going to change the access to the current licensees who took the E triple P and are eligible to receive uh, the certifications from ASPB that then allow them. So uh, you know, there's gonna be some, I think there's gonna be some grandfathering. Now, I I will tell you, Doc, some of this is speculation on my part. I'm just kinda spitballing it as to what I think the the most likely outcome would be. So don't, don't go quoting me song, you know, chapter and verse on this, but that's kinda how I think it's gonna play out if, if it were, if we had to go down that route.
Dr. Kretschman, what, what state did you come from?
Uh, Florida. I'm also licensed in Rhode Island.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I came from Florida, but I'm also licensed in Rhode Island.
Okay, all right, very good. That's another discussion that we have a lot, is making sure that um, we're not doing anything that would be detrimental to attracting people to Texas or allowing people to come to Texas. Uh, the other thing too, this, this is a, I don't know how to say this with it, I'll just say this, like, Texas can choose to recognize whoever to come into the state. And the fact that we may not have reciprocity or a two-way street, like, we can't force anybody to, to accept a Texas license elsewhere. And if you know, the, the downside of if, if this, you know, bends to the point that it breaks with our relationship with um ASPB, does that devalue in some form the Texas license in terms of the Texas license not, maybe not being recognized in as many other states? Perhaps. But for your situation, Texas can choose to recognize into our state whoever we choose to. So.
Thank you. I'm, I'm already in-state licensed and everything. I'm just thinking about the um, wanted to bring that SCIPAC issue onto the radar.
You bet. That's a very good one to raise, and I appreciate you being here. Uh, Mr. Hyde, you got your hand up.
Yeah, yeah, I wasn't sure if there was anything else you wanted me to add on it, but I wanted to just make it clear that because there's statutory language, which each state has to enact in order to join SCIPAC, that, that's already been passed, so there would have to be a legislative act for us to be withdrawn from SCIPAC. So the changing of the exam doesn't affect Texas's ability to participate or be a member of SCIPAC. What it may do is, I think, uh, uh, Daryl pointed out previously is that it, it's, it may a, it impact uh future psychologists from applying and being able to join it. So um, part to get more into the weeds of it, what ASPB uh, issues is an E passport. You have to get that E passport before you can get a credential from SCIPAC. And the requirements for the E passport uh will likely require passage of the E triple P. Now, what they will, what will they do going forward? I can't imagine that they're gonna require everybody that has an E passport to go back and retake the E, E triple P part two. But um, I imagine there's probably something going forward that they may be requiring. Uh, so it's it's more forward-looking for future applicants.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Is that clarity? All right. Any other questions? Okay, moving on.
Uh, John Delatorre.
Yes, my name is Dr. John Delatorre. Um, I'm a licensed psychologist, and I am also on the TPA board. Um, although I am asking my question sort of for myself and not as a member of TPA. I'm wondering about, and I understand the logistical problems of, of my suggestion or my question. But what are the practical implications of not accepting the E triple P and returning to the oral exam as Texas once had? And similarly relying on the jurisprudence exam as the, you know, statutory exam necessary for licensure.
Who wants this one? Um, so I can, I'll, I think I'm the only board member that's been around since, since twenty sixteen, seventeen. Um, so I, I came on to the board right when we were getting rid of it and going through Sunset. Um, we have uh, our resident Sunset expert here. Um, can you, Robert, can you, can you help me out? Tell, tell, let's, I want, I want them to understand. I want Dr. Delatorre to hear from the Sunset perspective of why that died. Um, and why that, that's not probably coming back.
Absolutely. I was just trying to pull up, um, so Robert Romig here, Deputy Director. Um.
And Robert was at Sunset when this was all happening, and I remember him just being wonky, like, in the weeds on this over at the Capitol. So this is, this is the perfect guy for this, for this question.
Yeah, so there's, there's two parts to your question in terms of the practical effects. One would be that the, the oral exam was always just a competency-based exam. And so getting rid of the, not accepting the E triple P two in this instance unfortunately also means not accepting the E triple P one, or not, not accepting, but um, not relying on. And according to ASPB, we would not have access to the E triple P one, which is the knowledge-based exam. Now, the oral exam was never, never a knowledge-based exam. There were um, some states at that time, the time that ours went away, that used an oral exam not for competency but for testing jurisprudence. So to your question, I don't think this is where you're going, but could you theoretically have an oral exam that tests both knowledge and competency? Theoretically, yes. Um, but uh, statutorily, no. Part of the Sunset process was identifying that the problem with the oral exam was in its administration. That any, any oral exam is really difficult to administer in a fair and objective way. Because everyone comes at it with their own uh thoughts and feelings about the profession and about what is a, what is a good answer and what is a great answer, uh, and which candidates answered fairly or correctly. And so as part of getting rid of the oral exam, as part of the Sunset process, statute now only allows uh administration of a written exam by the executive council. So, sorry, long-winded answer to come around to unfortunately, no, uh, no future use of oral exams without a statutory change.
Dr. Delatorre, any other questions there for us?
Uh, no, that, that was, that was great. Thank you.
Yeah, Robert just came over, and he's our newest, newest member over here, and we're really glad to have him. And uh, truly, there couldn't have been a better person to answer your question. So thank you both for being here, and thank you, Dr. Delatorre, for participating.
Sorry, I wrote you a book instead of just
No, that's what we're here for.
Who?
We got you now.
Yeah, sorry, there was something wrong with my, well, I had to go into the app and change my settings. But yeah, I'm, I'm, I thank you for having me.
Uh, state your name and who you're with for the record, sir.
Yes, I'm, I'm Dr. Ivan Chee. I'm provisionally, provisionally licensed in, in the state of Texas. Um, I'm currently studying for the E triple P right now currently. Um, it didn't work out the first time, or first couple of times actually. So there's my frustration. Um, but uh, to kinda get into some uh, some notes I have here. One, I'm glad that that was brought up about the oral exam. I, I, that was, I was actually gonna bring that up, but I'm glad that someone else did. Um, my, my thoughts on that, I'm like, I, I get that, that it's subjective based on who's, uh, you know, the licensees that are kinda grading the exam. So I, I get that. But when I look at the E triple P, I'm like, well, I don't know, I might wanna roll the dice on that. So that's my thoughts on that. Um, as far as just my personal experience with, with E triple P one at least, and the concern about there being an adoption of part two, um, here we go. Let's see, let's see, yeah, that's the oral exam. So, okay, I, I've worked in the prison system in another state. And of course, I'm, I'm seeing some patients here locally in Texas. I'm actually in a rural, rural area, so I, I'm dealing directly with a rural population, which I know that you mentioned earlier. And I can't say enough how, how much each day And I can't say enough how, how much each day when I work with this population. That it frustrates me that this exam is the roadblock that's keeping me from doing what I'm doing to help this demographic and. That's what it feels like, an, an absolute roadblock. And, and, and rural areas definitely need this. I, I worked in rural Kentucky. I've worked in rural Texas and there's a need and I feel like. E triple P one is already stressful enough. Why do we need to adopt a part two, which adds more stress and more roadblocks? For a population that is in deep need of mental health care and. It, it just, I mean, yeah, as far as. Needing something, yes, absolutely. There, there absolutely needs to be an exam. There needs to be a, uh, some kind of a measurement or, uh. Something to, to gauge whether or not someone can practice. But what that starts to come kind of translate into, it goes from gatekeeping. And it kind of translates for some, I'm an ethnic minority. I'm from Queens, New York. I moved to Texas. So for someone like myself, I don't like making excuses for myself. You know, I, I, I didn't come from a privileged background. I, I get that, but it starts to translate from gatekeeping to the good old boy network as a profession. And someone else mentioned earlier about LPCs. Yeah, a lot of folks are going that route because. Yeah, why not? I mean, their profession, I, I really hope I'm wrong, but I feel like it's going to leave. Us in the dust if we don't kind of catch up with the times. And I understand the need for gatekeeping, but. When does the gatekeeping become too much? And now the profession starts to become compromised. Um. Like honestly, if, if I had someone come to me and say, hey, what about psychology versus OPC? I would probably recommend OPC. And that sucks because I, I'm, I'm proud of the profession. But I, but I know that it needs something, it needs to, it needs to evolve. And, and I get both sides. Like, yes, we need to have the exam there to kind of. To, to, to gatekeep, but at the same time, there needs to be a balance between, okay, let's not be too much to where not, where we're completely. Rule, you know, blocking out a whole. Population, one, from getting the access that they need to mental health care, but also. There's something to be said about having other doctors and psychologists that look like myself and the representation that comes with that. So I, I know there was kind of a lot, but I appreciate you all for having, you know, for having me on and just hearing me out, just from someone who's actually. In the, in the trenches right now studying. So I appreciate that.
Dr. Chi, you, you represent a, a, uh, a, a, somebody from out of state. From New York who came here to work in a rural area. You are who we are trying to get here. So, uh, we appreciate you being here.
No problem.
Thank you, Dr. Chi.
Thanks.
Andrea.
Hello.
Hello. Good to see your name for the record for us.
Yes, Andrea Miles. I'm sorry, I did not put my last name.
You're good.
Okay. Well, I just want to thank you all so much for allowing us this time to just kind of share our comments. And, um, I am currently a LPC that went back to school to get my doctorate. And I did, I achieved it. And I've been trying to pass the E triple P since January of 2022. Um, and I previously have not had problems with testing, so I was not even fearful. I just thought, oh, another test. I had a four point O and, you know, my mass, uh, my, my doctorate program, a three point nine four in my master's program. So I had a, you know, I've always done well with testing. So it's difficult now. I'm, you know, I understand we needed, I'm not trying to even say no. Um, I would, it would be great if we could lower the score, but I get it. I get it completely. So I'm not, you know, I'm not here to complain or go in, you know, on my. You know, on about me and how I can't pass it. I'm still in there and I'm going to achieve it. I'm going to continue on. But I, um, I did want to mention though, that, um, you know, I am working with a group of, of. People that, um. Have tried to pass it as well, and some are going back to get their LPC. I was fortunate to already have my LPC. I'm glad I went about it like that. Um. But you know, they're going back now for their LPC and I don't know if they're going to, can you continue on? To try to pass the E triple P. They probably will. They'll probably be like me and now I feel challenged and I'm going to keep going back. Um, but my other concern is just to mention, you know, I don't know the answers to all of this. You know, you guys are the ones that. Know it's best, you know, it, when it comes to all the, the. Uh, the licensing or whatever you want to call it for Texas. But I do want to mention that it's very expensive. It really is emotionally taxing and I've seen some people get pretty sick and I'm not going to go into details, but, um. You know, it's affected people and, you know, I even know a couple or one particular that is going through a divorce now. It's hard on you passing this test, you know, and I know, you know, going through law school and all of these other fields, they all have it. We need it. I'm not saying that, but I do want to mention, you know, just knowing that we're all trying and anything y'all can do to help. Um, like giving us something to study because ASPB, you know, they, they can't give us material and they've even said they don't. Um, stand behind any of the study programs, um, that we need to go back to our, our schooling. And I do want to mention something now for people that do try to go into it. Maybe we need to make it clear that they might want to go to an APA accredited school. Cause the ASPB has on their, their website, um, and their documentation of the schools' scores. And the ones that are passing at a hundred percent, um, and kind of, you know, that's kind of what I'm feeling they're gearing us to. That, you know, had we gone to a school that was, would have prepared us better, um, than maybe, you know. But anyway, like I said, I, I just, I just wanted to kind of speak up and say, I'm one of those people trying to pass the first part. So anything, you know, we can come up with to make it easier, um, or not necessarily easier, but just to help give us some guidance as to. How to pass the first part or maybe just take over the second. I don't know what the answer is, but thank you for letting me speak.
Of course. Thank you, Andrea, for being here and participating.
Thank you.
From the board? Okay. Are you not?
Okay, we have one more. Rebecca Neil Beavers?
Yes, hi. Um, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Um, so I'm a licensed psychologist and the Associate Director of Clinical Training for the Clinical Psychology doctoral program at the University of Texas at Austin. Um, Dr. And, Adriana Haley, our DCT was also on this meeting, but had to leave at 1:30. And so she's asked me to speak on behalf of our program. Um, I will just reiterate some of the points that have been made, but first. Just want to say that we appreciate the opportunity to contribute to this conversation. Um, basically our concern is that we haven't yet seen compelling validity data for the E triple P part two. And, and in fact, concerns about validity and potential discrimination. Were the rationale used to defer using part two for California licensure? And I wonder how they're planning to navigate this issue as we all approach this January 2026 deadline. Um, and I mentioned California because. I'd like to think that as big states, California and Texas might have some sway and pushing back on the ES. B B P, um, for just asking for more validity data and more time. Um, otherwise, again, just to reiterate, our concern is that we're creating barriers to licensure that may be discriminatory in nature. Without compelling data that adding part two increases validity above and beyond, um, the E triple P part one. Thank you.
Dr. Neil Beavers, really appreciate you being here. Uh, guys, you've got UT here. Uh, any, any questions for? For Rebecca here? Dr. Lambden, you're on mute.
Yes, I do. Um, Dr. Neil Beavers, I have a question for you. The question is this, so I, I also share your concerns about the lack of. Uh, statistical information about the validity of the, the E triple P part two. And I wondered. What your thoughts would be perhaps, uh, if ASPB were open to. For example, a staggered adoption date, uh, say, for example, um, for those states wanting to be. Or volunteering to, to, um, adopt the E triple P part two in a staggered format, say maybe. A third, you know, just hypothetically speaking, uh, January 1st, 2026. Uh, doing some validity studies on that data as it comes in. And then, uh, moving forward with a second adoption for the second third of states and regulatory bodies and so forth and so on. And that would give an opportunity to generate or, or develop, uh, or at least analyze some, some validity data from the actual administration of the test. How would you feel about that?
Well, I think, um, it would, it would depend on, um. Where you might imagine that Texas would fall in this adoption process. Um. It's a. I mean, from a, just a big picture perspective, as a licensed psychologist, uh, involved in training future clinical psychologists. I think it could benefit all of us just to wait for more, just to push back in general and say, we need more data. Before anybody is forced to adopt this. But certainly I can imagine a scenario where states that. Choose to adopt it, um, that we kind of be allowed to wait and see. Uh, and to have them collect data in the context of. Those states licensure, um, processes to see what the actual impact of adding the E triple P part two is to. Licenseur. So I'm, I'm not entirely opposed to it. I think it would really depend on what the specifics turned out to be.
Yes, I, sorry, I just wanted to make one follow-up, uh, sort of comment to say I, I don't envision. I mean, I can't speak for the board, all of the board, and I think given the challenges about the adoption, the way that it is and the way it's being rolled out. Uh, Sunset, uh, sorry, just the legislative aspects of it and all. I think that more than likely. Um, I know, speaking for myself, um, I, I wouldn't be open to adopting it and being one of the early adopters. Um, I think there's just too many hurdles, but, um, just thank you so much for your feedback. I was just kind of curious.
Yeah, no, thank you. It's an interesting idea.
Dr. Becker has her, her hand raised.
Um, Dr. Neil Beavers, I'm curious as a, a training director that's in a graduate program, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess regulatory stuff aside, if you had the path cleared. And we were to adopt step one and step two of the E triple P. Could you just imagine for a moment, um. Would moving the E triple P one fit into your graduate training program? The way that this has sort of been proposed? That we should sort of reorganize graduate education to think about these, this is a two-part test? Does that make sense in your training?
Um, and forgive me to, for answering a question with the question, but, um. We basically, Dr. Haley and I were, we both intended for a chunk and then I had to step out for a minute. Could, was this a, uh, suggestion in the context of this meeting or just in general?
This has actually been, this has been floated widely and this happens in some other states now, but it's, it's actually been floated. I, I think in part by ASPB that it would take a shift to move the E triple P one. To sort of where the foundational knowledge is incurring into graduate programs. Um, and then the E triple P two to replace where.
Hang on, did we?
James Rosen.
Hang on, we lost Dr. Becker for a second. Hey, Dr. Becker, we lost you just for the last 10 seconds. Say that again.
Oh, no, sorry. Um, sorry, they're drilling outside my office. Um. I was saying it's, it's hard for me to think about this because I do postdoctoral work. But the suggestion has been that that E triple P one would slide into the graduate program where the foundational education is occurring. That it might replace like a graduate exam or a clinical exam. And then E triple P two would sort of become the licensing exam. And that's challenging for me to think about because from a regulatory perspective, then that's within a graduate program, not within the licensing space. It requires some regulatory work and all of that other piece. But I'm not sure that I've heard from graduate programs whether that actually makes sense to graduate programs. So that's. An un, an unsolicited question that I'm asking to you.
Right. Um, and so with the disclaimer that I haven't yet had the opportunity to really discuss this with our, um, our, um. Clinical training, um, folks here at UT Austin, I. I am trying and struggling to imagine how we integrate that into our doctoral training program, um. Given the many requirements that are associated with. Our APA and PC SAS accreditation, the adding another major milestone during the. Pre-doctoral period before students go to internship. I'm not entirely sure that that's tenable, but we, I, we have not discussed that as a program. And so I, I can only speak for myself. And my concerns in that regard.
Totally fair. Thank you for going down the rabbit hole.
Yeah, Dr. Neil Beavers, this is John Belamowitz. I really appreciate you taking a stab at that question. Um, and. Even as board chair, and I'm like looking for this stuff all the time. And sometimes even some of this information about this shift they're talking about. That information comes out kind of piecemeal even to me. So, uh, don't feel. Bad, but it's something we're looking at and thinking about how, what's the, again, second and third order effects. You know, uh, as we go through this together. Um. Really appreciate you being here and I hope that we can continue to have, um, especially the fact that you guys are across the street. I'm looking at y'all's campus right now. Um. I, I hope we can continue to have dialogue with you guys and I just can't stress enough. Um, again, we haven't had tons of dialogue, but how much we think about you guys. Uh, you, y'all are the ones who are mentoring the next generation of psychologists and mental health practitioners. And we cannot be doing stuff to, to snag you guys. So we're just very appreciative of the job that y'all do.
Wow, and, uh, and kind of right back at you. We appreciate the time and effort and energy that you're. That you, uh, invest in all things, um, licensure here in Texas, but particularly this issue, which is, um. Challenging.
Yes, to say the least. Uh, appreciate you being here. Any other questions from the board before we let Dr. Neil Beavers go? All right.
Say something just about the last point that was made by Dr. Becker and, and Dr. Neil Beavers. I mean, thinking about my clinical training program that last year. I mean, you know, I'm taking dissertation, I'm really focused on, you know, completing all my coursework, getting everything done. I mean, I, I think. Adding the E triple P on top of it. I mean, yes, it's at the point of knowledge, but. I'd still had to prep and, and really prepare for that test and really put my, my time and energy into it. And then, you know, having that as like part of your graduation. To me, it's just something to think about that. I mean, I think it could complicate and be, it could add a difficult stage. To sort of complete that, to complete the degree and that's, especially if it's before internship. Some people do actually finish their dissertation, um, you know, they're all about dissertation or whatever. So I mean, it, just adding that element and is a challenge and is a, that's a major. Embark, you know, that's something major to embark on, um, on top of that. So just like, again, I know that. It makes sense to put it there, but it's just something to consider that. I think that could be a challenge for some folks. Um, to be able to pass the E triple P and complete all their coursework on time with dissertation in mind. It's just a lot going on. I just remember that time period in my life. So I just, something to consider and something to think about. But I appreciate your, your comments, Dr. Neil Beavers and, um, well taken.
I, I agree completely with that perspective. In that final year, it's dissertation, coursework, applying for internship. It's. It's a, um, it's a number of large hurdle, hurdles already.
Uh, I, I am, I am from, um. In the university where we have PsyD program in counseling psychology. And I would not be in favor of this at all because. We are also trying to make fewer hurdles for our students. And still give the best education. And just to add that part would be another, uh, I agree with, uh. Both of you, the last ones who have spoken, and I would not want to add this.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Singh. Thank you, Dr. Neil Beavers. Um, do we have any more comment?
Yes, we have another one.
Do we, I mean, I guess we've been going for two hours. I want to make sure, do we need a, a short break or how many more do? Do we, I mean, I guess we've been going for two hours. I want to make sure, do we need a, a short break or how many more do we have? Do you know how many more we have? Okay, let's, let's do it then.
Mr. Varela.
Hi, good afternoon. Uh, I'm Dr. Jorge Varela. I am the chairperson of the Department of Psychology and Philosophy at Sam Houston State University. And I'm a professor of psychology and I served as director of clinical training for our PhD program in clinical psychology from June of two thousand fourteen to December of twenty twenty one, when I became chairperson. So, um, I appreciate the opportunity to address the board and to address this important issue of the E triple P two. Uh, and I suppose my concerns may overlap with the concerns expressed by others. Uh, first, I would say that I don't believe that the validity data of the test are, are there yet. I don't, uh, you know, I look for this, uh, you know, I served on the board of the Council of Directors of Clinical Programs and I served as a commissioner on the Commission on Accreditation. These, this issue and this test comes up in conver- in various places and, and with, from various perspectives. And I am yet to see convincing, uh, comprehensive validity data. Maybe it exists, but it's, it's yet to be disseminated widely and, and allowed to be scrutinized by the committee. Excuse me, by the community as a whole, especially the training community. Now, having said that, I, I won't say that the, the E triple P we use now isn't without its flaws. And there may be good reasons to advance to, uh, and to modify how we examine for licensure and competency-based examination would be consistent with the paradigm that we have now in doctoral training, that is competency-based education. I don't see that the validity is there, and I think that it has, there is a potential to, uh, to have outcomes that are unrelated to what we're actually trying to assess with the licensing exam. Whether it's driven by, um, you know, the concerns that we have with all forms of standardized testing. Are there groups that are, that are scoring less well for reasons other than their, their, um, knowledge of the topic? Whether it's race, ethnicity, um, whether it's socioeconomic status and means to, to prepare. Uh, I think that we need to take a step back and ease off the accelerator on this and and make these, you know, conduct the validity research and make, and put that research out for people to see it. Psychology as a profession, developing measures and tests like this, this is what we do. This is what we do well. You know, there are psychologists, as you all know, who dedicate their entire careers to developing these psychometric methods. And I don't believe that all that skill has been put to use in all this. When I hear commentary about this, this is consistently what I'm hearing, both from my colleagues here on campus and my colleagues across the country. That there is great concern about adoption of the E triple P two at where we are right now. I'd like to see more. This matter of, of bringing the E triple P, I'll call it the E triple P one, for lack of a better title for it. Bringing it into, into, uh, the, into doctoral, uh, into doctoral programs. Maybe there's a way to do that, but I have some serious concerns about how we would have to alter our training programs to accommodate that. You know, the point has been well made. Uh, I, even my short time here, I apologize for being so late. That, um, uh, that sure, there, there would be a lot of accommodation that needs to take place, maybe more than can be made with students towards the end of their training, working on dissertations, applying to internships, being on internship. Uh, and I also kind of worry about the cost to students of taking the E triple P while they're in that same, maybe something can be done about the cost. That's not an insurmountable obstacle. But it is an obstacle that as of now, we, I haven't heard any models where that's not an issue. I would hate to see our students, many of whom are first generation college students, uh, to have to fork out hundreds of dollars to take an exam. And I, I, I guess I can't say it enough. I really would like to see us really be sure that this test is measuring what we want it to measure. And that it's giving us the outcome that we think it should be given us. And I'll yield my time.
Thank you, Dr. Varela. Uh, any questions from the, from the board? Dr. Varela, this is John Belamowitz. I, I, I have a question for you. ASP PB is very graciously agreed to come talk to us at our next board meeting. You know, I'm not a psychologist, help me out. Like what is, if you had, what kind of questions do you have, a, a specific question? We're gonna have the chance to ask them, like, what would you, what would you ask them in this scenario?
I would want them to lay out in complete and, you know, in a thorough and comprehensive manner. How do you, what do you know about this test? What do you know about how it works and how did you get that knowledge? I couldn't publish an article based on something less important in a, in a journal without going through rigorous peer review by people who don't know me and who are dispassionate about, about the, uh, the test here. You know, I've spoken to people who worked on the, um, I forget the acronym, the advisory group that ASP PB put together. It's with an E, ESTAG is the acronym.
Yeah, ESTAG.
Yeah, there, and, and from people I know who served on the ESTAG, they characterize a lot of what happened is in that capacity is disingenuous, that ASP PB wasn't completely forthcoming and misrepresenting some of their decisions. Very concerning things. And, you know, I'll leave it to the members of ESTAG to comment for themselves. But hearing that makes me question, you know, where are we in this development? And it, I don't feel it's been as transparent as we would expect something of this importance to the profession.
Thank you, Dr. Varela.
Yes, uh, to return back to your question, I would ask for a thorough, uh, and comprehensive review of what they did. What are the actual data? Not just tell me what you found, but tell, show us the numbers. Not just, you know, I don't want to, you know, what are, what's the, the, the strength of the findings that you have? That this is measuring what it's supposed to measure.
Yeah, I think, I don't know if you saw, there's a couple kind of nodding heads here and I'm the little guy on screen here. I'm nodding my head as well. Um, I'm with you there. Don't tell me what you found. Show me what you've, show me the data.
Well, I take those data available for others to review.
Right.
I mean, everyone has a stake in a good exam. No one's gonna, you know, beat up the E triple P two if it's a good exam.
Right.
I mean, no, and, uh, I've even heard comments from some colleagues in different parts of the country saying, well, the way this is headed, we're not really comfortable with it. Maybe it's time we started trying to come up with our own exam. Of course, that's logistically a very difficult thing to do. So I'm not, I'm not necessarily expecting that to happen per se, but that's the level of concern.
Well, it's the discussion that we're having because we don't have another option. If we're, if ASP PB is truly inflexible on the adoption of this, which they have said that they are, and we've had other conversations with them, you know, in, in their stance. You know, as of now is still no delay. Adoption is coming in January of twenty twenty six or else. So that is, that remains their stance. So we, we absolutely are having to have the conversations of, you know, making a test because there is no other option if they remain that way. So.
My perception of this as a, as a educator, as a psychologist who's been licensed for over twenty years, that this feels like we're being railroaded into the E triple P two. And that makes me very uncomfortable. When someone who has a, a stake in this is railroading us into this, that means the time for action is now. Sorry, that comes across as kind of alarmist.
No, it's, uh.
To be an appropriately alarmist, but.
I, I don't think so. I don't think it's inappropriate at all. Um, we're all freaked out about this because we didn't ask for this or try to, you know, put ourselves in this situation. So I don't think you're being alarmist at all. Uh, any other further questions from the board before we let Dr. Varela go? Dr. Varela, thank you for being here. Really appreciate your insights and input. Um, it's invaluable to us, uh, as we go through this process and hope we can, um, have continued dialogue if you have any other thoughts or ideas.
I'm, I'm welcome, I'm welcome to participate. It's an honor. Uh, I appreciate your message to me, inviting me. I'm sorry I got here so late. I had fires to put out as a department chairperson. They don't, they don't wait for anybody, certainly not me.
You got here in time. We appreciate it.
Board and to everyone else who participated.
Thank you very much, sir.
Have a good afternoon to all.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right.
That's the comments.
Okay, let, we've been going for, really appreciate everybody's diligence here. Let's, uh, let's take a ten, let's take a ten minute recess. And then we'll come back and discuss what we need to and wrap it up. So I'm sorry, we'll come back at, uh, are we still going? It's two oh six right now. We'll come back at two sixteen.
Hold on just one second, Mr. Chairman.
All right, uh, ladies and gentlemen, it is two sixteen and everyone's cameras come back on. Two, we have a quorum. Okay, so it's two sixteen, we're back in session. Want to give everybody the opportunity to, uh, make any closing remarks, questions, comments before we wrap this up. I know we could talk about this a while, um, we have, uh, but I believe that, um, just want to, again, for the public who's still out there, we've had a lot of people drop off, but for the public who's still here, very grateful for all of your participation, um, both observing and being here to see the conversation and for those who participated in the conversation. Um, that is what we asked for. Um, obviously this is a, a challenge we're dealing with. And, uh, just appreciate everybody's input as we navigate it together. So I'll turn it over to the, uh, the members of the board for any closing comments or questions, um, before we call it a day.
Mr. Chair, one, one thing I would like to note for the record that, uh, at, at one point we had a hundred and twenty five virtual attendees.
Okay. So thank you for putting that on the record there.
I don't really have any more comments, but for the folks that stuck around, I just wanted to say thank you to the public for coming and for contributing to the conversation because I think it's helpful for us to hear all of this. I feel like we've been having this discussion for over a year. And it's been our voices kind of talking in a lot of circles and having the same conversation. Um, so it's nice to hear from the public that we serve and, and hear what folks are actually thinking about and concerned about as opposed to us trying to just extrapolate and think that we know what we're representing and talking about. So I appreciate that a lot.
Here, here.
I also just want to say thank you to the public for attending. I really do appreciate all the comment. It's, it's so helpful. Um, I, I think, you know, what I've kind of gathered from all of it too, and just prior to this, and then obviously listening to public comment and listening to my colleagues here on the board and, and all my fellow board members. And I think the key here is open discussion. I'm, I'm going to be going with you, John, to the, to the mid-year meeting for ASP PB in Boston. So look forward to doing that. Look forward to open discussion with ASP PB. You know, I, you know, I'm trying to think and I don't know if anybody has any ideas or any, you know, I, I have thought of a couple of things. I think obviously I know delaying the time is going to be key. If we can delay a little bit, just the more time we have to process, the more time we have for open discussion, the more time we have for alternate choices. Um, not necessarily choices, but, um, points of view and just potential options, um, things that we can process and just having an ability to discuss that I think is key. One thing I did think about, let's just say, I mean, if we were able to have negotiations with ASP PB and talk to them. One thing I thought about, and this could be like just, you know, you can shut me down if I'm totally off here, but okay, so if E triple P part two is required of E triple P part one, and I'm not even going to go to it, that we're E triple, E triple P is required right at the point of knowledge that, that key. Let's just say it's still required like it has been. What if the E triple P two be required that you take it? But you don't necessarily have to pass it. If you did pass it though, then you would be eligible for PSIPACT. And you could actually have almost like an accolade on your licensure that states, you know, you're, it's almost like a certification, like, uh, and I know that sounds crazy, but it is a way of potentially like working both sides, like we're, you know, we're accommodating that, we're, we're, you, you, we are gonna, we're gonna say you take it, but you don't necessarily have to pass. Uh, if you've passed E triple P part one, you don't necessarily have to pass E triple P part two, but we still require it be taken since it's a the quote unquote mandate. But, um, it would also allow certain people to have to like for, I guess for portability, it would help with that. Uh, and any issues that arise out of that. And just a thought, again, I mean, like, it's not necessarily like my complete point of view, just an option or a thought. I'm just trying to think of potential solutions or negotiation points that we can have because I think we need to have, you know, respectful, cordial and good negotiation about potential options. And it's just something I thought about, uh, kind of recently as, maybe it's a way to kind of where we can work it in and, and kind of, uh, kill two birds with one stone.
So, all right, you're saying, you're saying essentially they gotta go pay for it, log in, take it, whatever, because ASP PB says they're together. That's an additional cost. I'm, I'm curious from the attorneys in the room here, like, do, that still strikes me as restraint of trade or additional costs.
It's additional cost that.
Additional cost, but not restraining trade.
Well, no, it is because if you can't afford it, you get them out of the question.
Now, which is almost even worse because you're just saying pay this fee just to get in, which becomes more of a gatekeeping.
And that, the optics, I mean, think about the optics, how that looks, uh, from an elected official's position, if they look at it, you're, you will, you now have codified in rule, thou shalt take this exam. But we really don't care whether you pass it or not. So you're going to have, you know, think, just think about how that would look. You're, you're requiring somebody to take an exam, spend X hundreds of dollars to do it. But you don't, it doesn't matter. It doesn't affect their ability to get licensed in Texas. So why do it? Now.
Because you would have portability, like you would have that portability piece that you'd be maybe missing. I, I, and again, I don't agree with the point. It was just the thoughts around it or ways around it. I mean, I don't know, just I get it. And then the optics of that are not good, but like, I'm just, you know.
Apart from, apart from the restraint of trade issue, I think you would have to build an incredibly robust preamble in any type of rule like that to explain why you were doing that. Because you're going to be constantly questioned as time goes on. People are not going to realize why you have it and you're going to need something to point back to in time. The next board that comes in here, after you guys roll off, are going to ask, why are we doing this at our next rule review? Why are we doing this? We're going to need to point back to something that has memorialized our rationale for requiring payment of a fee to get nothing returned.
And payment of a fee not to us, payment of a fee to a non-governmental entity.
Correct. Mr. Spinks, I have a question. Can the pass, pass, passing score be lowered?
Yes, it's, it's totally within your purview as to what the passing.
So that's one way we can, we can, uh, ease the hurdle is if we lower the passing bar. And, and not keep it so high where it's, you know, becomes very tedious. Because if it's lower enough, then, you know, like when we used to do the oral exam, uh, two examiners used to examine the candidate. And if one, uh, you know, both had to fail to fail the person.
Right.
And if one passed, the other didn't, I think they passed.
If we had a split, they retested.
Or they retested, but often they passed. Uh, and, uh, but, uh, it, I, I think that's one way to, um, ease this issue if we have to. I don't think we'll be able to escape it unless we go fight in the court. And maybe, uh, some billionaire can give us money, donate the money to fight in the court. Uh, but, uh, the, if we don't, if we have to have it, then we definitely can lower the passing score.
Mr. Adler, closing thoughts?
Yeah, I know we've kind of discussed some creative, you know, solutions to this and kind of like, you know, what can we do to, you know, work, but work between the lines and kind of like, you know, to ease the burden, you know? Um, and I, I don't know if we're gonna, I just, I, I'm not saying there's, um, there's not a point in doing that, but I feel, I also worry that like, or I think that we're not going to have, like, what if we don't have the ability to really be creative? Like if that's, those things are not options and it's much more of a kind of very binary choice or, you know, um, I think because, um, I just feel like it might come down to that. Um, sure, the passing scores are within our purview. And that might be the only thing that's within our purview at the end of the day. And that might be the only thing that's within our purview at the end of the day. Um, and um, other than that, um you know, I'm just trying to think of like, you know, how will this play out? And you know, and those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Adler.
Makes me very happy to know that we, Mr. Spinks said that we can lower the passing score. Because that way we have a an option to deal with this hurdle and not make it so impossible that, you know, it it would scare people off. So we have an option.
Yeah.
Yeah, Robert.
The price of of the test, you know, still stills there, you know? Um, the 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 um the hurdle of another exam is still there. Um.
I think the cost is three or four hundred dollars.
It's it's gonna go up to a thousand. Mr. Romig has something, though.
Uh, just just uh to address your question about the the setting the passing rates, one consideration I wanted to make sure y'all were aware of, uh, when when the Sunset Commission was looking at the oral exam. Um, one of the key considerations was that it had an overwhelming pass rate, oh, over ninety percent. Uh, be and and so I would just advise when you were thinking about setting pass rates for things. Uh, you certainly want to find that sweet spot where it is still testing. Um, competency is still testing what you're trying to gain from the test and not and not setting it so low. Um, for example, you would, you would not want to adopt the E triple P two and then set the score at zero to say everyone passes because then it does start to look like that rite of passage that you're just making people do rather than a meaningful uh part of the licensure process. Um, not to say, though, that you would not, I think it is a valid question. You will always be wanting to ask yourselves, is the passing rate for the E triple P two or E triple P one or any exam set at a fair assessment level? Uh, you certainly don't want it too high either.
Yes.
So I guess there's a little bit of room maybe to, you know, not lower it too much, but you know, still make it that sweet spot, you know, like you said.
Any other closing thoughts? Dr. Lambden?
Yes, excuse me, I I have one. I think, you know, this coming meeting with um this the this uh the group from ASPB will be a really prime opportunity to ask for the data, the transparency of the whole process, but also the data to um give us confidence in the test and the adoption of the test. I think it's, you know, that would be a prime opportunity, and maybe we should reach out to them ahead of time so that they they do have the opportunity to gather whatever information that they need to before they come. Given the short amount of time that we're looking at in terms of uh January first, twenty twenty six. Um, and then I think perhaps um, you know, between now and then, there's opportunities also for other thoughts and other propositions, suggestions, recommendations, but um, you know, I think it would be worthwhile to ask them to consider uh a staggered uh sort of implementation. And then we can kind of look and see, you know, what the data looks like because it's my understanding that because of the very few states that are now adopting it and have have implemented it, that the data just isn't there and we're we're being asked to adopt something that really doesn't have a whole lot of validity to it um at this point. Uh, so anyway, just some closing thoughts.
That's, I appreciate that, Dr. Landon. And then the other thing, if I can add one thing to that, Dr. Landon, that's great if we can figure out the validity part of it and get all that data. I still have the question. What is the purpose? What problem are we solving for? And so that's the other thing. Once we get that, we've still got to tackle the what is the necessity?
Say, I I have an idea and I do get your point, um, Mr. Bilamowitz. If we look at sort of the driving test that everybody has to pass in order to have for the state to feel confident that we have the skills to to be a safe driver on the road, if we kind of take a a a, you know, a page from that particular scenario. It's my understanding that proportionately speaking, you know, the number of psychologists that are licensed. Um, there aren't that many individuals that um have disciplinary sort of actions against them. Um, and if we think about that scenario, is it po- would it be possible? And I haven't thought this through, so forgive me. It's I'm just kind of thinking on the fly. Do we have, is it within our with, is it within our propo- uh you know, purview to to maybe ask for those individuals who who have had disciplinary issues um to take the exam, given that competency seems to be a problem? Versus asking everybody to at the forefront at the beginning, take the exam just kind of as a sort of blanket sort of requirement.
You're saying use it as a remedial tool?
Well, it's i- in a way, I guess, to demonstrate competency, given the competency competency is in question, you know, once you have, you know, me, I don't know, and we can decide, I guess, if we move forward, you know, um, one, two, sort of, and I'll ask the attorneys to kind of weigh on that because obviously that's not my background.
If, excuse me, if, I think the problem here is the ASPB stating that there it's going to be a you must have both one and two. If ASPB simply were offering both of these component parts of the test and saying states, use them as you will, take them, leave them.
Right.
Uh, then in that scenario, certainly as part of a disciplinary action, um, there are many agencies that require their licensees to go take a test again or take. Um, I I don't, have we previously had folks retake the jurisprudence?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we've we've had folks retake jurisprudence, and so it would be a similar kind of thing. You could absolutely work the E triple P two in that way. Um, but currently our understanding is ASPB is not going to allow that kind of picking and choosing and and use of it that way, that you you will have to use it both on the front end.
If we had our own test, we could do something like that. I know even FAA does that with, you foul up pretty bad with the FAA. There's any number of tests that can go make you retake up to and including another checkride. So, I mean, but FAA owns its own tests, so.
And and I think that would put us in a stronger position. This is something that can't be remediated or or addressed in a year and a half, which is what we have basically. So so I'm not saying we shouldn't look at that. I'm just saying right now, given the time constraints that we have, we don't have the time to to address that particular issue. However, um, it's my understanding, again, I don't know how updated, how to date my information is, there is a province in Canada that is using the ASPB part two uh in a limited sort of a way. Um, and maybe Patrick, you might address that, but I think it might be Ottawa, I believe, that's using it and it only, um, it's only intended for uh applicants that I I think have been trained outside of the province. Again, I could be misspeaking, but if that, I mean, that kind of sets some sort of a precedent, if you will, for us to propose something along those lines.
Mr. Adler?
Yeah, um. So I'm asking about the structure of the meeting we're gonna have um with ASPB. Um, they'll be here virtually, I assume?
No, they're they're planning on being here in person.
Okay.
Um, which where, I mean, it's it's it's, I want to just note for the record, it's not a a small thing and it's very appreciated, appreciate that they take
They're taking it seriously.
Yeah, to to come and talk to us.
Um. And as far as it's basically gonna be a format where question and answer format.
Um, not, well, you you, everyone will have the opportunity to ask a question. Um, they've asked for forty five minutes to present. And which I've, I, we asked them kind of what do they need? And we're gonna say they're coming to talk to us, so they're getting what they asked for, and I'm happy to to give them. And then obviously we'll all have a chance. Um, what I, I was gonna talk about this later, um, probably ahead of that meeting, but I can, I can tell you now. Um, I anticipate every board member having a certain amount of time to make sure that they ask their have the opportunity to ask whatever questions that they have. Um, and essentially, I've talked about this before and looking at other deliberative bodies, um, um, we're gonna do it kind of how the Supreme Court does is that everybody speaks once before anyone speaks twice. Um, to make sure that everybody has their opportunity to ask questions and to clarify what they feel they need clarified from ASPB.
So as far as like what they might bring with them, like the data we're discussing, you know, this, you know, this um this treasure that we now that would verify, you know, verifiable. You know, that would kind of make us feel more comfortable. We obviously, we don't know if they're gonna bring that. We don't know what, you know, um kinds of things they're gonna bring.
I suspect, Mr. Adler, it's gonna be very similar to what they presented in Ottawa. The that because they've done that in a couple of different road shows. Um, they have a road show. It's what they presented at ASPB. It's what they're kind of taking on the road, and I suspect it'll be very similar, which is they're they're summarizing for you the net results of what they are putting out there as their validity data. They're telling you that it's valid. They're telling you that it is accessible. They are telling you all of these things, but they're not actually showing the data. And they're not actually making the data transparent. And those are two different, you know, criticisms of what they're, given what they're asking us to do.
Right.
Um, it's a different level of criticism and a different level of transparency that I think is what we're asking for. But I suspect they're going to bring the first when what we're looking for is is the second. So to your point, it's a, it's a good one.
Yeah, in their defense, like I I, we're not advising what, they may very well do that. Um, I I certainly don't want to prejudge whatever they're bringing because I'm think, I don't know about other jurisdictions. I know we've had a significant amount of conversation. So I'm certainly looking forward to whatever they have to say. Hang on, Patrick, uh, Patrick, you got your hand up?
I I just wanted to try to answer Dr. Landon's question, which was, I don't really know, I've not heard of that Canadian province uh using the test in that particular. But we do have a provision in our current rules that allow us to to if we're disciplining the licensee to make them go take an exam. So that's something that we currently can do under our, under our rules, but typically it's we'll tell them to take the jurisprudence exam. Um, then I can't think of a time we've we've required somebody to take the E triple P again. Um, but again, I don't think that solves the pro- our problem, so.
Uh, Mr. Adler, I think you had something more.
Um. Did I? Um. I can't remember it, so I don't, I don't want to waste anybody's time, so.
Okay. Any other closing thoughts? Again, to the members of the public who are still here and to those uh who might watch later, really appreciate your awareness and participation uh in our meeting today. Um, appreciate the board members all being here and for your engagement, um, your questions and your listening to to all of this, so. Without objection, we go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Hearing no objection, this meeting is adjourned is two thirty eight on March sixth, twenty twenty four. Thank you so much.
Bye, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Have a good one.